...of the Scotland County Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, we do have a quorum. And I would like to remind everybody that the purpose of this board as all other boards and those that are paid and non-paid uh with Scotland County is to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of this good county. And I hope that we have been able to do our part in that. I take it everybody's had an opportunity to read the minutes of the last meeting. Uh, do we have uh any amendments to the meeting, to the minutes of the last meeting? Any changes, any additions?
I said no, no, did you see something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think on the, I said the motion carried but not unanimous. I think I'd probably say with one dissenting vote maybe because I'm five to one on both of them.
All right. If that's for our rules, uh, verbiage, I don't know.
Okay. What would you like to make up?
Just that you have one dissenting vote. That way people know that it was five for and John McClain against it. Both of them. I mean, I don't think you have to mention his name, but.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the amended verbiage?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Daniel made a motion to have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Devon has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, we have approved of four minutes. That brings us to our first uh new business, which is rezoning application for Toronto Marshall. Is Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is for a request to um have an initial zoning for a currently unzoned property in East Loringburg. Is that how we would have to phrase this?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we have.
And we have no form for that, so um. And I'm sure Brooke has explained to you that, so.
Yeah.
Um, this is for the replacement of a resident of a manufactured property. So this zoning would go in as RMH one?
No, just RA.
Just RA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Um, is any discussion about this?
I have one question. Is, is this in a floods on or is it just the, if there's an X after it says floods on, is that a floods on?
No, it, whenever the X is there, I put the um panel number eighty-three sixty-seven. It shows in the color that she's near it, but it's not in her parcel.
Okay.
Look, that's the one. That's law of you. Yeah, I think that was uh, where is that?
That?
Yeah, yeah. Close but not.
I know this.
Oh, quiet. She will not need with that. She will not need an elevation certificate with that.
Okay. Right. Um, I, I just was curious about one of the documents and I just want to ask about it just because I've never seen this document before, to my knowledge. That is the one certification statement for homeowner. Um, I certify the following five things. Brooke, is that something that your office has or is that something that, that somebody asked you to sign? That's that right there?
Oh, that's part of her building permit. I didn't realize that was in there. Um, that is just saying that she will be responsible for doing her own work. She's not gonna sell.
This really has nothing to do with our business.
No.
Okay. All right, um.
Basically on your own contract or is that what you?
Yeah, she is.
Um, do we have any more discussion at all? Uh, we do not have to have anybody actually speak for or against this, do we?
No, we don't. I mean, she's here if you have any questions, but she don't, we don't have anybody because there was a mobile home there before.
Okay, all right. Uh, so I have no questions. If there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the uh rezoning?
I'll make a motion to approve the application number five-three-two-dash-two-four for residential agriculture to place a mobile home.
We have the uh motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Devon has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Marshall, you're being approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank y'all.
I told my wife it would be pretty quick tonight, so. Certainly not like last week, last week. Uh, second order of business is rezoning application five-three-three-dash-two-four, uh Church in the Pines. Um, I brought this property up and the way this is worded, there's something in there about uh subdividing into more than one uh, one plant, is that correct?
There's a plant that's been recorded that subdivided out three lots, but they have not shown it on the GIS.
Is that?
Is this what you're talking about?
I guess I need to look a little bit more closely. No, it's this one. But so we've got two different. So are those three plots that we have the yellow highlight on the same as the one with, was that Outland Mill Church?
Outland Mill Church, uh Chapel Road, Outland Mill Chapel.
Are those all the same plant?
The, uh, the three lots out of the church property is on the same plant.
Let me take a little closer look because what I'm seeing doesn't quite look like. So what I'm seeing is, I, I don't see anything that, is this on the five-point-two acre?
It's out of the five-point-two acre plant.
This on our documentation is a single plant. We don't show any subdivisions at all. It's, it's one five-point-two acre plant.
And you said you saw it and you were s-
Well, it's a different piece of property.
So this one I just got from mapping yesterday. Yeah.
This is what you're talking about, right?
It's on, for the thirteen page recording.
Okay.
It's not on here yet, on GIS.
So this is asking to have these subdivided?
No, they're.
It's the rezoning.
They're already subdivided, but what has happened is the, they're, they've placed mobile homes in that area and it's a R-one area. The last time one's been placed has been two thousand seventeen and I was not here. But it is a R-one where there cannot be mo- double-wide mobile homes.
It's already subdivided. They just want to be able to use it for a particular.
Right. They want to rezone that to have a mobile home overlay so that the buyer can place a double-wide on it, although the whole area is double-wide. Yes, everything is a double-wide except the cemetery and church.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The, the plant, the book that shows the three properties broken down should be book thirteen page four, which y'all should have for that.
Because I'm looking at where the church is, is the last four digits one oh one nine. The larger of what I see is two plots to the right of the main property is one zero zero two and the other one is one zero zero one.
How about GIS?
And on GIS, there are no three smaller properties right here.
They have not done that yet.
Yeah, mapping has not gotten to that yet. But these are all new documents. These are all just replanted.
Okay, so they've just been replanted, but on paperwork it's got oh one nine.
Yes, I just got these yesterday. So when I done the agenda, I did not have these new parcel numbers.
But this is an existing plant that's been on record since um ninety-two or some, sometime around the, the one that, that the Paris did.
That, that was.
That, that's the three you're talking about, though, right?
No, I don't think so. I mean, from that, that old, what you said.
We've even got a, a deviation between this map and what you're saying.
I think that's across the street. This is the church plant and this is the three that's on the side. That's on across the street, isn't it?
This is the one they should be looking at.
The five plus two?
That's what I have here.
The wider, so they've only subdivided five-point-two.
And it's showing the same thing.
It should show three on the other side of the road.
Yeah, on the other side of Devon is, is a lot evidently that have been divided out and there's a mobile home on them.
Right.
But this is on the other side of the church side of Devon.
It's at the five-point-two.
It's part of the five-point-two.
I can email this.
Part of the five-point-two.
So what we're, what you're seeing, these three over here is across the street here. These in the red is what we're looking at, the three now. Those three are right here across the street. So there's a street in between there.
Okay, so.
Which is Devon Drive.
That's my bad for having this in black and white and not print it in color. Trying to save it out.
So are these the three?
So these are the three.
That is not the three.
It's a request to subdivide those three out.
Those are the three across Devon Drive here. These, these are plotted on that big parcel here.
So this is a request to have these three lots subdivided out from mobile homes.
Not those three that you highlighted.
Okay.
It's the five-point-two acres.
Part of the five-point-two, too.
Yes, five-point-two acres. It's the right side of that split into three acres.
Right.
I mean, three parcels.
Three parcels.
Yeah.
Three, three of them, right.
Yeah, and they don't show up on our map. So yeah, what, our paperwork we have does not show those three maps and Brooke apparently just got that today, so.
Yeah, and in the agenda I, I put on there that there are no tax ID number issued at this time.
So the five-point-two is one, is one parcel and it's going to be subdivided into?
Into.
Three.
Three on, it's gonna be four on the total.
So it's gonna be four total, but are they gonna have, yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm kind of sad.
But these three are on the side.
Right, I, I, I know that's not part of, I know that it was gonna be in this five-point-two.
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm saying, so are they gonna have their own parcel number?
Yes, they're all right here.
So they're gonna, they're all gonna have their own parcel number?
Mm-hmm. All three already have their own parcel numbers.
So the rezoning is only gonna apply to the three lots, get them all eventually be delineated somehow?
Well, we want to rezone them from R-one.
Right, but.
To the MHA.
But those are the three lot, you're not rezoning the whole five-point-two acres?
No, the remaining will stay.
All right, now that that's cleared up, and this will be going from RA to um manufacturer home one.
It's a mobile home overlay so that you can have a double-wide there.
Okay.
It's not gonna be sold or anything?
What's that?
The, the parcels.
They are already sold.
They are already sold?
Mm-hmm, right.
Well, there's offer on, we're waiting. Offer listed on one.
After they were subdivided out, they were listed and sold with the understanding that there could be a double-wide there because there's double wides everywhere, but when I looked into my zoning, it is not allowed. And the last time one was put there was in two thousand seventeen, I was not here. So I don't know how the whole area become double wides when there's not a mobile home overlay.
Right. But so basically what we're doing here, you are asking for us to do the rezoning as the owners.
Yes, as the current.
Once it's rezoned, it will be sold.
Sold.
And it will not be sold until that is done, correct?
That's why it stands right now, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, and I'm assuming that this will go through the county commissioners.
I love.
Okay, I don't see any problem with that, but do you anticipate closing on this before the next county commissioner meeting?
Uh, they, I don't know when. Do you know when? They said, she said they were putting off the closing.
We, yeah, we're, well, we're, it's, from our perspective, it will be pending the rezoning, final approval from the county commissioner.
Yeah, I was just thinking for clerical and, and for safety's sake, it'd be best to go ahead and get all of this taken care of and then have the deed done after the county commissioners approve it.
Yeah, all of our, all of our paperwork is contingent on that. So that's already written in.
That's a good word, I guess.
What, um, and so uh to make sure everything goes according, um, isn't it something in the zoning about subdividing the partial, it has to be so many acres?
No, as long as you have eighty feet of road frontage, if you don't have the minimum lot size of five-point-oh-one, you can have eighty feet of road frontage. And the review of the map was fine. They have the eighty feet facing Devon Drive on each.
So it ain't nothing in there that's going? Come back and say, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? We've got two people over here being awful quiet.
And the reason I asked.
It's a little early in the process here, right?
And the reason I asked that question, um, I think it was like five acres of this person's property that I was trying to purchase and I was gonna purchase it to do the same thing, but it said, uh, it had to be so many acres.
Was it the county?
Yeah, that's why I asked the question because I went through it, that's why I asked it. And I don't want to approve it and then they get there and say, well, you can't do it because of the acreage.
I understand, um, no, the minimum lot size is five-point-oh-one, but if you do not meet that, then you have to at least meet the eighty foot of road frontage for each parcel has to have that eighty foot of road frontage.
It's convoluted. I'm glad somebody understands it all. Seeing there's no more discussion, do I have a motion to approve Daniel Reed? I don't have any fun on me.
The motion that we approve?
Five-three-three-dash-two-four for rezoning from R-one to R-one dash MHA. I bet you two ass.
I make a motion that we approve the rezoning from R-one to R-one MHA.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Redent, approve, motion was approved.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
The rest of the business that we have is basically paperwork stuff. I would like to mention one thing that um, this will be my last meeting um until somebody twists my arm a couple of years from now and gets me back on here again. And um, at your next meeting, I don't know if there's gonna be any more new members, so may or may not have a quorum, I hope you will, but at the next meeting, uh, the first order of business will be to elect chairman and vice chairman. And just so you know, uh, everybody knows Jim Smith, his wife had some health issues. Uh, he has said that he does not want to be considered for chairman. Um, I don't know that John will, so that leaves the three of y'all to fight it out. Uh, Jim did say he would remain on as vice chair if everybody on the board wishes him to do so and the vote approves him as such. So keep that on mind for your uh January meeting if there is one. There may not be one, but we seem to have business about every month now. Um, and John's not here and he's probably the one that would be able to discuss concerns about the major subdivision issues. Brooke, have you taken a look at those three forms? Do you think all three of them are necessary? They have a form.
I don't know if it's because of, they're three hundred dollars each time that you do that. So I don't know if it's for that reason we have three or I can see a preliminary and a final.
The first one is strictly an application to apply for a major subdivision.
That's right.
Before the January meeting, I would like for everybody to take a look at that and make that your, if you have a January meeting, to look at all three of those forms. And I agree with Brooke. Again, what do you think? Have you taken, have a chance to take a look at them?
I looked at them about a month or two because when they first owned and it looks like there's a lot of things that are repetitive.
Yeah, so I, I'm like you, Brooke, I do not see any reason for that initial request for the, for um major subdivision. Um, going through your office, if they submit the initial um plat review, I think that's all we really need. That's the way we've done it in the past. You have the preliminary and the final, and that's worked fine in the past, hasn't it? And unfortunate, well, not unfortunately, fortunately Jean's not here with us, but I don't know, she could give us um, you gentlemen never, never got to meet Jean Klein. She was helping us two and a half years ago with our uh rewriting our zoning ordinances. And needless to say, uh, we didn't play ball with her as well as she would like. She kind of wanted to do everything her way and we had some questions and I think before it was all over with, she ended up saying, fine, y'all do it the way you want to, and pretty much walked out. But every question we had was a legitimate question. We want to understand why she did something and unfortunately she is not here to explain to us why she thought that initial request, that, that initial form should have been in there.
She was trying to plug us into somebody else's process.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's it. Um, so those of us that have been here really don't see the reason for that, but if you, two guys and if John, I'll, I'll get with John, ask him to take another look at it. If you have questions about it and don't get the full gist of it, I'm gonna put Brooke on the spot here because she understands it more than any of us. Give her a call and get, get a, get the skinny on it. She, she'll be, she can tell you more than I can, but I just don't see the reason in it.
And once we decide if I need all three of those forms, I can finalize all of the forms that you were able to edit.
So that's the only one really that's in question?
That's the only one that's in question.
Okay. Uh, also for your information, when we got the final um ordinances, there were, the, the formatting was very questionable throughout. The forms that Jean did for us um did not match the standards Scotland County formatting. Um, I, when we presented it to the board commissioners, the county commissioners, they told us that they would commit county um resources to getting everything formatted correctly. Two years later it wasn't done, so I did it myself and submitted it to April and the county commissioners for their approval. And this is the last thing before everything is approved, formatted as it should be. Uh, that took care of, I think, I think some typos and some spelling issues. And we're still going through all this stuff and finding things that don't necessarily apply as Scotland County would like to have them apply. They need to be rewritten maybe a little bit somewhere. Um, there's some things that John McClain, being a surveyor and seeing things over multiple counties with subdivisions, major minor, um, and all that kind of stuff. He is a lot more versed in that kind of stuff than any of the rest of us are. So um, if he's here at the January meeting, if there is a meeting, he could fill in on a lot of that stuff as well. But um, so that, that's one thing out of the way. Um, that, that's gonna need to be voted on whenever you guys get together for the next Comprehensive land use plan hopefully is?
We hope to have it on the fourth of, the sixth of January.
Okay.
Board of Commissioners.
All right, so once that is approved, that will give that a large tool that we don't currently have. The main thing there that I wish could have been in there is something that the county commissioners had on the new solar ordinance. Their preamble to this new solar ordinance, they say, "Give reasonable consideration to, among other things, the character of zoning districts and the suitability for particular uses with a view of conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land." And down further than that, pursuant to the foregoing, Scotland County has acted this zoning ordinance with one of goals being to promote land use decisions that encourage development in suitable areas while protecting national, natural resources and the rural character of the county. Now, that's something that this county did not have in writing prior to this coming out. So that was one of the reasons that I wanted everybody to impress on Cypress Creek and any other large solar farm developer, that we now have this document in our hand where we can come to them and say, "We as a zoning board, considering the preamble and the ordinances and our comprehensive land use plan, do not think that this is the appropriate use for a major solar application on this land." Technically, we couldn't do that before. I wanted to make sure that this was brought out and that everybody understood we have these tools now to sign up. And I encourage you to look very strong, long, and hard at any mega site that's requested to have rezoning in the future. And if it's not appropriate, don't feel bad about saying nothing. Whoever's put the application in can still go to the county commissioners and they can, um, what's the technical aspect on that? They, they can thank the county commissioners anyway, can they?
Yeah.
And we are, we are not a legal entity, we're making a recommendation. That's all it is. And the county commissioners can tell us to go to hell.
Well, I think they have a lot of respect, especially this board that you're chairing, so I don't think they would take a recommendation lightly from the board.
So from a legal aspect, we have now, from a legal aspect, everything to say, no, we don't think that's suitable legally, because legally we did before.
You have, you have much more discretion under the, the new ordinance.
Right.
Of, it's not unfettered. I mean, you have to be reasonable about what you do.
Right.
But you certainly have better ability to look at it in a balanced way than you did before.
Because if we said no, they could have legally sued.
Well, it, it went from a quasi judicial process where it's an evidentiary matter and all the evidence you had was from the people who wanted it done. Nobody ever had evidence to present to the contrary.
Right.
Plus, like the chairman said, there's some new language in addition, in addition to it now being a legislative process instead of quasi judicial. You've got this language in there that also sort of buttresses your position and if you, you can't just automatically say no to somebody.
Right.
But you have better ability to look at it.
We have more meat on the bones.
We have more discretion.
Say, hey, we don't think this is, and then give reason why, just not say no, but we have reasoning to back why we disagree where it's gonna be at.
And that's, that's a fair way to do it. But I want to do something without any, have any reason.
Right, right.
And the numbers that I quoted about the twenty percent land loss, that is, you, you can go online and find that. It was twenty point oh nine percent since two thousand, I think the year two thousand at the time I did that. And uh, North Carolina was like nineteen point eight-three percent loss in arable farmland. So these are not just numbers that I pulled out of the air. These are factual numbers, the figures are there. Uh, I think a good bit of those numbers might have come from the land use plan. And um, you know, it, it's, it's not a limitless resource. Like, you know, you've heard it for years, they don't, they don't make it anymore land. And uh, you know, Lee Howell does own about seven hundred acres up on Aberdeen Highway that's in Scrub Oak and a few scattered ten, twelve, fifteen-year-old pine. And my opinion, this is all it is. The folks that are getting the money for this stuff, go ahead and pay a little extra money, clear the land off, and get solar without wanting to take your way out. The folks that are getting the money for this stuff, go ahead and pay a little extra money, clear the land off, and get solar without wanting to take away agricultural land.
Now, is this a separate piece from the one you just got rezoned?
Yes. This, this is behind Old Clark's Pond. And Can't Go Ford's House and all that. It's about 700 acres up there.
He's got a cabin up there.
Lee's got a cabin?
Where it's cleared off.
Yeah. Oh, I thought it was.
There's a.
The Don Buddy Ford's house.
Directly crossing the Newtons. That's where he's got his cabin, but now I'm not sure whether that's contiguous to what you're talking about or not.
Yeah, that's, that's a different lot altogether, yeah. But down in that little bay.
I know where you're talking about.
I mean, is that where you're talking about?
Across the news, down in the. I didn't know how, you said 700 acres. I didn't know whether it went that far or not.
This is from the old Clark Pond and back way on behind there, wherever that next paved road is that goes back. So that's where that is. But we need to consider appropriate use. And we got a bigger toolbox now.
I guess one question is, as agriculture becomes more, you know, tight economically, what does the landowner have at their disposal to keep the land, you know, in agriculture? I mean, row crops right now, commodities are in the dumpster. So, and they're not paying much for, you know, leasing per acre. So if the only thing left in your toolbox is at least it's a solar, then it's kind, that's why in the last meeting I kind of explained. It's hard to eject because as a landowner, if somebody came to me and said, hey, I'll give you $1,000 per acre versus $100 per acre per year, what do you want, I mean, your, your, I mean, your tax, especially if it's 800 acres times 1,000 times 25 years. I mean, that's been several amount of money versus a row cropping payment that, I mean, the farmer may crop, he may not like this year. So what do you, I mean, you're.
Yeah, I've never heard of one person that said no. And this was several months back when Cypress Creek was looking at other people. And this particular family owns about 500, more than 500 acres. And they said, "We will pay you X amount of hundreds, thousands, millions of dollars." And he said, "I don't want your money. I want my land."
Yeah.
So I, when my parents passed away and left my sister on the farm, I looked at solar. That's a, that's a real, I mean, that big dollar sign's a real incentive. So I, you know, I don't know. And the board currently that we have is going to lean a little bit more conservatively, conservatively towards the individual right of the property owner rather than the overall care of the county. I'm not saying that good, bad, or indifferent, but it's, it's a more conservative board than we've had. And that's typically the way it goes. They look to the rights of the individual.
I mean, it just seems like when a county that has so much open land and agriculture becomes something that's not economically feasible, I mean, what's going to happen? You will lose our rural heritage. I mean.
That's the argument.
But I mean, if I owned 1,000 acres and I can make the argument and say, well, I can farm my vineyard because I got this 1,000 acre per solar that's paying me to be able to play, you know, and as the next generation gets land, they don't live here, they don't care about it, and in the year, you know, over the next 10 to 15 years, more land will transfer than any other time in history. And so what happens when that next generation says, well, I live up north and, I mean, that payment per year is substantial. And I don't have to look at it. Y'all do. I don't, I don't live there and.
That's exactly what happened on the board of Richmond County. I think it was probably 2,000 acres.
It was about 1,700 acres in Scotland County and there's around 5,000, more than 5,000 acres in Richmond.
But those were absentee property owners. They're like three generations down from the man who acquired and put it all together. That's exactly what happened with that.
Yeah, I just think that, I mean, your rural heritage is, is at stake. I mean, obviously, I mean, it's, and over, I mean, as we get more far from agrarian society, you know, land, people don't, you know, they don't want nothing to do with it.
Well, I mean, where you are.
Yeah.
My great grandfather had six, six kids. And each one of them, my granddaddy had seven kids. And all of that land got divided. A lot of it was, a lot of the children were female. They got married, they moved away, that land got sold. It just, you know, it's very little of it's owned by anybody named Millen anymore. And the 300 acres plus that my sister and I got, we sold that to my first cousin to make sure it stayed in the family as long as possible, and they farmed. And Brian was telling me this year, before he planted, he paid $182,000 for his cotton seed.
Whew. You'd never make a, I mean, cotton at the price that it is.
He's farming about 3,500 acres now.
Yeah, I don't see how that's.
He planted a lot of corn this year.
I don't see how these numbers make sense.
See, why people go to solar?
Yeah.
Yeah, you look at that.
That's the argument that you're going to have. I mean, somebody's going to say, it's not feasible economically to farm, but it's feasible for me to put, you know, 1,000 acres on the solar. And so, I mean, but what happens when every road you turn on the solar, then you, you kind of mess up from a development standpoint. If somebody did want to put a subdivision in and you kind of messed that up, you know, because there's no, that rural heritage, they haven't opened farm fields, they're over, then, I mean, you're in a tight place.
Cypress Creek said they got a cap. They said it is a cap. It won't be over which. That's what they said last week.
I mean, I do think the commissioners should put a cap and say, "All the farm land total, we're only going to let X amount of acres be in solar." I don't think that's a bad argument to have.
Yeah, that, that may be a good recommendation, aren't there, to say we're going to cap.
Let me say.
25%.
Yeah, how much land do we have now on solar versus how much is open and all of a sudden that, let's see, it comes back to the landowner and say, well, how are you going to tell me to do with my land? It's, it's my land, you know, and who are you to say I can't do what I want to do?
Before, there were 73,000 acres of arable farmland in this county. Currently, there's 57,000. And that's in 22 years. And it's not all solar. Like I mentioned in the other meeting, you got infrastructure, you got residential, you got commercial. Some of that's been taken out and put in hog farms, chicken farms. That's not considered as usable agricultural land. Currently, it's been rezoned. I think, I think, isn't that right? They rezoned that for chicken farms?
Which ones?
Is that rezoned when you do go into farm, uh, chicken farm? It's not. Okay, so that is in the numbers too. But anyway, my little spiel on my last meeting, you guys have heard it. And I think that's probably it.
Who else I want to talk about? Bylaws?
Yes, that was the last thing. All the other committees, as far as I know in this county, have a set of bylaws. Zoning and planning, to my knowledge, and to the previous chairman and everybody before him, there have never been bylaws. And Daniel, you said, I think, that you had worked with some bylaws on another committee somewhere?
Yes.
And at the time, Herman Tyson had worked with some bylaws. Herman's not on the board anymore. But I would like to challenge you, this is not obviously a duty, but I would like to challenge this board in the upcoming year to, over the course of the year, develop a set of bylaws. I think it's duly needed. The main reason is that if you have bylaws, you'll also have guidelines for training for new members. And I have also asked the county commissioners in a letter that I sent to them in April to invest this board in helping to vet new members. Because a lot of times, people that come on this board are volunteering for a board. They're not volunteering for this board. They're volunteering for a board. And I think we need somebody that this board is going to be comfortable with coming in and that you feel like you could work with and can understand and willing to read and work with zoning ordinances. Because they're not easy to understand unless you work with them for years. So now you've got my three cents worth.
And so what would it look like to have a board, like, for this board specifically, like, training? Is it just, you know, the individual reviewing the ordinances or is it all constructed?
Like reading the ordinances, but state North Carolinas, North Carolina School of Government has a class for code enforcement officials, for zoning and planning officials, for inspection officials. They've got a whole series of classes. Some of them you can probably do by Zoom online. Brooke and I went to one in person that was sponsored. Was that sponsored through the Council of Government and all of them? So that might not be a bad idea. If we could see if the Council of Government and the county commissioners would agree to sponsor, sponsor another School of Government training session. And that would get everybody in it at one time. Daniel, you, you have been through it, haven't you?
No.
So that, that's, that's something to consider. But now you've got my three and a half cents worth.
Which is something I wanted to bring up that has come across my desk several times in the past two months is the mobile home year make and model. Ours is when HUD spent approved the mobile homes, and that was in 1976. But I looked at our surrounding counties, Richmond, Oak, and Robinson County, and theirs all are different. We've got some people moving mobile homes that are HUD approved, 1976 or newer, and look terrible. Robinson County, theirs has to be prior to 1990. And this is something that the commissioners are going to bring up for us to make our recommendations of. You have time to look through the mobile home articles in our ordinance. Please do so because they're going to ask for this information that I've.
There's a certain age where they cannot be moved and be destroyed?
They won't get a permit.
You, you cannot get a permit for anything less than, older than 1976 because that's when HUD approved them.
And you're recommending changing that to at least a 90, right?
Well, if five years from now in 1990, it's the, the mobile homes are still going to be older. I would think like a 30 year, they can't be older than 30 years.
That's your recommendation?
From my research in doing the mobile home permits, it would be easier for them to be no older than 30 years. Because we set a year on it every year. The tradition's been over and over and over.
Can we put, I mean, with a year, are we able to put like conditions on it, like, like pursuant to the shape or of the structure? You know, because some, you've got some mobile homes that may not be 30 years old, but the, the condition of the home is terrible. You don't know if it's going to fall apart while it's on the road. Are we able to put that verbiage in there when we recommend the age?
Then that would require a conditional use permit so that you can put conditions on it.
So when we recommend the age, then we recommend putting conditions?
Whatever year is going, or whatever period's going to be covered, you'll have to have some rational basis for doing it. I think 76, that was something that changed majorly in 76.
Well, not just 76 is when HUD began to approve the homes.
Right.
Unlike for wind.
And that's why, that's why that was the cutoff initially.
That's right.
Wherever we establish as the next cutoff, we're going to have to have some basis for using that time.
That, that's also around the same period of time when they made stipulations about aluminum wiring, single strand aluminum wiring and asbestos and lead-based paint. These all came about about the same time. I don't know the history. It may be when EPA came up. I don't know. But I know that there have been manufactured home electrical system and heating and air conditioning system updates since then, water heater updates. And I know a 50-year-old single wide mobile home, there's no way that thing's going to be able to be moved and be used again.
Or if you could have an engineer to say it's safe.
Yeah. That was going to be my suggestion. If, if they want to do it and they're willing to pay for a conditional use permit and have X number of inspections done by a licensed professional such as an electrician, a plumber, whatever, if they're willing to pay for that.
I mean, I like the 30 year. I mean, I like that part. It's simple. I mean.
Because they're going to look different. When you put them, a 30-year-old one beside a four-year-old one, they're going to look different. But a double wide's a double wide. How can you set them apart?
You can just arbitrarily pick a year, a number of years out there. There's got to be some underlying basis for, for doing it. You know, you can't arbitrarily.
You just going to say 30?
No, I don't think so. But I mean, I think you can probably come up with some rational basis for some period.
But then maybe one of those other counties has that information.
Well, you have to keep going back to the, if you say 90 and then in 2030, we have to go, like, you have to keep going back and adjusting.
Yeah, well, it should be a living ordinance, you know, it should.
I think the commissioners are going to, they're going to look into seeing if they can have just a number like 30. And they just asked me.
Yeah.
Thomas asked me to mention it and have everybody to read over and kind of give what you think in our next meeting because it is going to come up.
Yeah.
I heard that. And I think the engineering part too. I mean, if you want to pay X amount of dollars to move a 40-year trailer, I mean, pay the X amount of dollars. I mean, it's going to cost a lot, so is it even worth having an engineer come out versus just getting a, a new trailer?
And double wides have to be put on a brick underpin.
That's an engineering foundation.
But single wides can still use the vinyl skirting.
That's right.
I don't like that.
That's in our bylaws?
That's in our ordinance.
I mean, in our ordinance.
And I, as a retired home inspector, I hated that skirting because you had, you had to manually tear it apart and put it back together. They would not give you an access opening. It was like, I don't know, sign, slips inside. And when you got to put the last one, it was jammed in there and there was no, no way to get under a house. So I don't like that.
That's what double wides and manufactured homes, got to have the, that's what double wides and manufactured homes, they got to have the underpin, but a single wide can have the skirting.
Right.
I'm just asking because I want to know that I'm asking. So whether I give you some rental property that way.
I'm not familiar with real estate or anything like that, but if a mobile home does look bad, does it depreciate the places around it? That was a question asked to me and I'm not even sure, I wasn't even sure how to answer.
You probably would. I mean.
If you see a bunch of bad-looking mobile homes, you probably would not want to buy it because the property that's near it. And I think that's one of the problems we're having.
It's like Highland Park. They pulled just about every one of those old mobile homes out and put new ones in. And some of those old ones looked like.
And you know, the, the mobile home part by the graveyard.
Oh, yeah.
That was, was empty. And some of those people could not afford a new one and theirs were too old to move. And so there was like three mobile homes out of there that was just basically homeless till they found other means of being able to move, because it was my grandfather did. But they could not move it.
So basically, this is going to go to the county commi, the county commissioners is going to have this on their agenda and send it back to you, this, this board for discussion in January. Have fun, guys. What else?
That's all that I have.
You have motion adjourned? I'm going to make that motion. I'll make a motion adjourned. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Bless you all for anything that you've done and I'm going to do.
It's been a pleasure, buddy.